So, tonight we have our annual overview of the twenty sixteen seventeen auditor report. Do you want to add any words of introduction?
No, as always, we look forward to the feedback to help inform our financial management and, you know, we're certainly pleased with the outcome of, of the auditor's findings. I would leave to Carol, if you wanted to introduce.
Sure.
For the public.
This is Jamie Colt from Bonadeo and Company. They're a firm based out of Albany. They've been doing our financial statements for about five years now or so. And we had a very collaborative relationship with Bonadeo this year, as always. And Jamie will present the financial statements for us.
And overall, the amount that was unassigned was at the maximum amount allowed by the state of four percent. That's four percent of the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget of approximately ten point one million dollars. So overall, fund balance is being managed effectively and prudently in accordance with regulations that you want me to. On budgetary basis, the general fund, you were under budget on revenue by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and expenditures were under budget by about a hundred and fifty dollars from the year. And on an actual basis, your expenditures exceeded revenue by about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you're essentially breaking even for the year. Whole things to note that these financial statements were prepared in accordance with tenement second accounting principles promulgated by the Government Accounting Standards Board. And they are quite long, sixty something pages long, managed sixty eight pages long. Does take a lot of effort for management to put these together each year and they do it rather efficiently and expediently. Your audit is done by the first weekend audits. They are actually one of the first audits that we perform because they're ready in time. So I would like to acknowledge management to be very ready for us for the audit each year. Another item to note, because these are in proportion to GAAP, you have your budgetary basis of accounting, modified core basis kind of the general fund is on, you also need to prepare the statements on a full core basis to show your long-term assets and long-term liabilities, which is called a statement of net position. And you actually have a thirty-two million dollar deficit on a full core basis. And that is driven mainly by your other post-employment benefits amount of, and that amount is forty something million dollars. Fifty-three million dollars. And that amount is the future obligations or even current obligations you're having for retirees for their retired, their health, health benefits. That amount is significant and is an estimate that is prepared by an actuary each year. You also have some long-term pension amounts that are recorded about three million dollars, which is your proportionate share of the state retirement system. The state retirement system divides up their liability to all governments that are the state and their retirement system. And that amount is less than one percent of the total, but represents about three million dollars that you have to vote by your financial statements each year. Both those numbers, though, are not, are not reflected in the amounts that are budgeted each year. So that should be important to note is that each year you budget the amount to pay for your retirees' healthcare and also make contributions to the state retirement system. And those are independent of these long-term numbers. But these, these long-term numbers are promulgated by the GAAP needs to be recorded each year.
Jamie, just to ask a clarifying question for the public that may be watching at home when we talk about the post-employment benefits. This reporting that you have is similar to all other public entities, that everybody needs to report these obligations.
Correct. Yes, everybody has, well, everyone has one of these plans and that's most, most governments in New York State have to report that, that amount. And it is important to note that, that the school district, you know, pays taxes on the amount that they budget each year and that's the amount that, that is, that's important. That is fifty-nine million dollars that is in the future. So controlling that number that you pay each year is the main, the significant number that you need to pay taxes each year. We also did an audit on the extra classroom activities. The extra classroom activities are the clubs that the state, uh, that the district runs each year. That report has a modified opinion related to, it's modified because we have our company comfortable over completeness of revenues received. That is not abnormal. Over ninety-nine percent of the school districts in New York State have a modified opinion and it's an apparent thing that happens because of the way that we're required to audit and inherent nature of these clubs. So that is another, one of our variables that we do each year. So that is the report that I have this evening. Is there any questions for the board?
It will be online once the board adopts it tonight. It'll be online within the next couple of days because we actually have to send it to the state.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna.
I'm sorry.
If anybody, first, we're starting with the board. If there's any questions for the, we had a chance to discuss the draft one, so I think we feel satisfied.
Yes, we met with a previously documented.
Be happy to open it up for comment from the community or question if you want to go to the mic and, or the question.
Sorry.
Okay.
But yes, it will be made public after tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Jamie. And I want also want to give some accolades to Carol and the business office staff for all their hard work.
Looks like a late.
No, wait till Carol's done being accoladed because that's funny.
But a tremendous amount of work goes in from a management perspective in preparing for the, the audit each year. And Carol and her team did an outstanding job.
And so there was, yes, thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carol, absolutely. Even for people like me, it makes it very clear. You talked about the other, the OPEB, that piece of it again. I thought it'd be really interesting for just the community at large to hear the concept that we worry more about the year-to-year number, right? Remember you were saying the three-point whatever number?
Yes, the amount that you pay each year in premiums for retirees. Yes, how that number's being controlled.
Yeah, that's, that's right. As opposed to just looking at fifty-three million and saying,
Right.
wow, that's a big number, right? It's really, what really matters was that, this is what I learned today, at least.
Sorry, it's how you're controlling the year-to-year number, which, which does translate into the bigger number.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure the community at large.
All right, thank you, Dave. And again, thank you, Carol, and thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much for giving that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now transition into our administrators' updates.
Good evening, everyone. Have to start off with the fact that we've just come out of our homecoming week. And certainly, we are proud of our student athletes who earned a number of victories in their competition. But to me, in my sixth homecoming here in Irvington, what really stood out was the increased school spirit, a broader representation of the community present at, at the number of events, and larger turnout in, in general. You know, the Saturday night events are always highly attended, but having attended a couple of the other nights, there just were many more people present. So it certainly speaks to spirit and Bulldog pride in our community. But I also want to extend gratitude to the new Bulldog Booster Club and their efforts in helping develop a wonderful week to, to launch the club. I think they're, not only did their concessions attract some, but it was their broader engagement of the community by including some of our younger student athletes in some halftime competitions. And those others being recognized, I think, brought a lot of younger members of our community to the games, which was, was really exciting to see. Also, it was neat to see the Booster Club in a partnership with the PTSA selling some new spirit wear, sporting the, the new district logo. And they were selling well, so, so we're certainly glad. Just as there's good news to report there, you know, over a weekend like that with so much activity, unfortunately, we had a couple situations that dampened some of the enthusiasm, aside from one student situation where a bench tipped and some students were injured, but hopefully on the men's. During the football game, we had a student crowd fan section like I haven't seen before that's well organized. We actually have a club now in the high school that's called the Fan Section or Student Section Club. And they organize activities and chants and cheers. And the kids were jumping up and down and cheering on the bleachers on the home side of the field, if you can picture the hillside. And unfortunately, a part of their enthusiasm led to some of our bleachers actually pulling away. Our bleachers are constructed railroad ties that are in the hillside and the benches are bolted onto them. Some of the, two of the railroad ties actually pulled free. And two of the benches, one tipped and one completely fell over. And we did have some students that fell, some minor injuries. So if you were to look outside now, you'll see that area is closed off. We're having it inspected and evaluated for what we need to do for repair or replacement to ensure that it's safe for all of our spectators. Interestingly enough, bleachers are a part of our annual insurance inspection. So they were inspected earlier this year. So Carol, being as responsible and thorough as she is, has reached out to the insurance company to come in and take a look before we take any steps at any repairs or modifications to existing conditions, which they gave a thumbs up to only a few months ago. But there will be communication coming out from Mr. Cohen and any students that did have any bumps or bruises that we're aware of, there's been outreach to, to those families to check in on the kids. And we certainly look to follow through and make sure that, one, our kids are okay and, two, that our bleachers get fixed as soon as possible.
Just, I guess maybe number three, is there some thought that might be put into, when we have such a large enthusiastic crowd, is there any way to monitor? I mean, I heard that students were standing on the benches, so.
Students standing on the benches, I guess, wasn't atypical to what we've experienced in other sports venues. But, you know, I think there's always, always lessons learned. We had staff members that, we have chaperones that are stationed right at the bleachers. And honestly, it was something that, that we didn't foresee. So with everything, you look for the learning experience and the takeaways. But what it does send a message to is that somewhere down the road and something for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to consider is the need to update and expand seating around our field. I'm sure that'll be in form of future discussion. To move on, next item I just want to touch base on, and I communicated with the board with looking at our sequence of scheduled meetings for this school year. The administration would like to make a recommendation that we reschedule one of our Board of Education meetings in April to allow us to be able to push back our budget cycle a little bit, as we've discussed in this forum in the past, to allow us to have the most recent information when we're presenting and not have to come back and modify as new numbers start to roll in from New York State and SED. But to get to that final timeframe where we can still hit the targets and benchmarks for the budget adoption that's required for New York State. So currently, we look at our budget process beginning with our administrative roundtable in February and then in March, jumping into, on March sixth, the operational side of the budget, followed by, I'm sorry, followed by instruction and then the proposed budget. April tenth, having a budget discussion, dialogue, board and community about any adjustments to the proposed budget. And then moving the meeting that is currently scheduled on April twenty-fourth, moving that to April seventeenth. That would allow us to be able to have one extra meeting before the required adoption date, which is shortly after, after the seventeenth, but prior to the twenty-fourth. So the ask from the administration would be to simply change one meeting date, April twenty-fourth to April seventeenth, which will allow us to have.
That's effectively adding a, a meeting in our budget?
Not adding a meeting.
So how many do we have total then?
Actual budget presentation. So if we leave out the roundtable, we would still be having one, two, three, four actual budget meetings. So one would be operations, one would be curriculum instruction, the proposed budget, another budget discussion for modifications and recommendations from the board, and then the seventeenth, which is essentially pro forma, that we've made the modifications from the preceding week to come in and present the final budget for your adoption.
Do you know offhand, how does that compare to how we did it last year?
I think, I think it's similar, but it's pushed back later, once, one meeting later into the cycle.
Right, okay.
So with the boards okay, at a future meeting, we would look to make, by way of resolution, make the adjustment to the meeting schedule for the year. So there's a, just always keep your eyes tuned to the, to the school newsletters and district weekly newsletters. There's a lot of great things happening in our schools. Coming up on the seventeenth, we have the Main Street Parent Dare Program at seven PM in the auditorium. Something that should be of community interest is the Route Nine Design Plan Meeting. There is a local effort looking at improving safety in and along Route Nine, which is Broadway, for not only vehicular traffic, but of course bicyclists and pedestrians. So it's an opportunity to come in and give village leaders and some consultants feedback about your thoughts related to safety along Route Nine. There's a meeting on Thursday, October nineteenth, in Tarrytown at the Warner Library at six PM. So folks are encouraged to certainly attend that. And then, not too far down the road, on the twenty-fifth of October, there's Family Math Night at Dow's Lane. And of course, as we always look forward to Tuesday, the thirty-first, the Halloween carnival to see our high schoolers interact with our youngest students. Dr. Core, would you want to share a few words about all the good work that went on across the district today?
So, it was Super Tennis Conference Day. And at the elementary, both Dow's Lane and Main Street met together at Dow's Lane. The focus today was a combination of looking at revision of ELA work, but also starting to expand on the new science standards, the New York State Science Learning Standards, not the next-gen standards. And so we had our group of teachers continuing to develop some, or just getting grounded in the standards themselves. We also had a consultant come in from Bosse's who worked with our social studies teachers at the K-five level in the morning, expanding on the Inquiry Arc, which is the framework behind the new social studies standards. They're not so new anymore. And then in the afternoon, he came and he worked with the six twelve teachers. So it was a really nice continuum to have him working with both levels of teachers and was able to share what he did in the morning with the K-five teachers, but also to build that consistency. The other thing, at the secondary level, the departments worked within their departments on mostly unit development. One of the things that I would love to share, though, is today was about the, probably now the fourth meeting of the English and Science teachers. So the freshman writing course has always had its eye on getting to the point where we have a true interdisciplinary unit. So this year, we'll launch an interdisciplinary writing project with the science teachers and the English teachers. So the bio, all students in bio will be developing a writing piece. Content will be supported and assessed by science teachers. The writing will be supported and somewhat assessed by the English teachers as part of the writing, as part of the freshman writing seminar. So just to give you a kind of a little bit of a window in, they started, they've articulated their goals. Students will create an argumentative piece, which is scientifically accurate, is well reasoned, conveys deep knowledge about the topic, is written in an engaging and lively way. The argument about an issue relating to ecology or genetics. And students will take a state, take a clear, strong claim about the issue and so on. So they've really worked through and they're developing it piece by piece. One of the things about content area teachers very often, and many of them are tremendous supports for our students in writing, but they don't always feel like their background allows them to assess student writing in the same way that as an English teacher did. So there is a ton of excitement. Sarah Rust, our instructional coach, has been integral in making this, in working with both Gendelisi as the English chair and Amy Ma as the Science Chair. Matt Samuelson has also been part of this work. So we're really excited. When we launched this several years ago, we had, we definitely saw this as the future. And when we got feedback from students, this was the feedback that we heard from kids, that what was the most helpful part of the freshman writing course? And it was the technical writing, writing they're being asked to do in other, in their content area subjects. So we see this as a great model, a model that we would love to eventually extend to social studies so that there be an interdisciplinary approach for one of the social studies units as well. So we're excited. So today, the teachers got back together again and I think they'll be launching in the late, I guess I'd call that, early winter.
Thank you, Dr. Core. Okay, so next, we're going to talk about the New York State School Board Association resolutions, which, amendments. Just for a little background, you know, we often, our discussions are about what's happening within our district. But we have a regional and state connections that help to try and protect and support public education. So we're part of the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, called WestPut. And we're also part of the New York State School Board Association called NISBA. NISBA represents, does a number of things for, for school boards, from weekly or daily updates about education news to seminars about different aspects of school board work. And they also have a, an annual convention, which is occurring this week. Dr. Harrison will be attending. It's up in Lake Placid. We don't have any members this year from our Board of Education going. Next year, it'll be in New York, I'm sure some of us will be able to go to that one. And certainly, if anybody had wanted to go, there was that opportunity this year. One of the things that happens at that meeting is a business meeting. And at that time, the, at the business meeting, a number of resolutions are discussed and voted on. And these resolutions are used by NISBA to then in turn go and basically lobby our governor and our legislature on issues that are important to, to our public schools. So today, you, you have in front a slate of those new resolutions that are proposed and would be voted at this meeting. For us, this is sort of an exercise in understanding the process because since we don't have anybody at the meeting, we won't be voting, but we would next year. In the past, this has been presented as, and today, as, the way that this has worked is that MORA is our liaison to the Legislative Action Committee of the Westchester School Board Association. And I happen to be a trustee, so we were both at a meeting along with about two dozen other districts reviewing these resolutions. NISBA gives a booklet that, that reviews those resolutions. And then we essentially vet and come up with a consensus view on what our region believes are the right actions for those different resolutions. And that then gives us the, we believe, some, some regional impact in terms of supporting together this slate of, of resolutions. So, in fact, Irvington has a resolution that's being presented at NISBA next week. So it's a shame that one of us can't be there for this vote. And that one is the number ten on this page, which is related to our recent summer election in which we expanded the board to seven. It turns out that there'd been an oversight in the state legislature that caused us to have that July.
Fourteenth election?
Do you remember? Somewhere in the middle of summer.
July eleventh.
July twelfth.
July twelfth. And so what we propose is for the future, if anybody else ever wanted to follow in our path, that, I mean, thankfully, there was a large turnout, so kudos to Irvington voters. But in the future, if this resolution were passed, what would happen is that at our normal, at a normal May vote, voters would approve a resolution to, to expand a board, but the expansion wouldn't happen until the following year. This saves on costs because then you don't have an extra vote and, and there can be more. And the vote itself, so, so essentially, it simplifies the process because then you also don't have campaigns in the middle of summer, which are pretty atypical. If there are other questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them. Essentially, the, in the past, the process has been that this is, this is essentially vetted by WestPut, you know, a, a number of, you know, two dozen school boards that are participating. We have about forty-six in total in, in Westchester. And then we generally approve the slate of recommendations so that our representative at a business meeting would then vote along with our region at the meeting. That's my overview.
I had one question that I asked, and I won't ask again.
Yep.
I had one other question that I didn't ask.
Okay.
Which was thirty-one, where we're not recommending for adoption or not, not voting together to recommend for adoption. From our corner of the world, support funding to expand career, the CTE programs.
Yeah, so this is just a technical reason that we're opposing it. It's because there's already a resolution that NISBA has to support it. Sometimes the school board doesn't look to see that NISBA already is doing this. And this is a case where there's already a.
It's not getting ignored.
Yeah.
And my question's really, when I was looking at this, and there's, there's a lot of information that's attached to each one of the resolutions, and I did my best to read the backup to understand them. But are there financial costs associated with these? And if so, how do you guys at the meeting take that into account? Because it's great to support something, but how do we know how, what the impact would be financially on any one of these?
Right, well, from the, so from the, from a school board's point of view, you know, obviously, we're very concerned about state mandates that where something is imposed but then not supported with funding. And so that's generally a view that's, that's a part of, you know, understanding and deciding consensus. Last year, there were a number of resolutions that would have sort of sliced the, the, sort of, there's a big funding pie from the state, right? It's the second biggest piece of the budget. And you hope that it's, we would like it to be equitably distributed. And sometimes there's a piece that might slice off a, a bit of that funding pie to, to fund something that isn't something that most districts would benefit from. And so we tend to resist those. And we tend to resist, we would say no to a resolution that would impose a cost without funding. So, I mean, I guess that's the, the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so my reluctance in kind of just approving all of these en masse, as much as I can understand how much work and conversation probably went into it even by our two representatives, is I, I, you know, since I'm, I don't remember doing this before, I'm just a little reluctant to say, yes, I sign off on everything without going through each one. And I certainly don't want to take up our time to do that tonight. I'm also equally confused when you have resolutions that are not recommended for adoption. So if I'm reading that correctly, we don't support legislation that requires sex offenders to remain on the New York State sex offenderry?
Right, so, 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 yeah, no, that's, that's the one that David also asked about. So in this case, the, it's, the, the key word is, is remain. So you have. So, you have the one, A, this is being apparently pushed by a national organization via some representatives on a particular school board. B, with level one, it doesn't say that, it doesn't say, this doesn't suggest that someone wouldn't be on a registry, it's just, it's saying that they would remain on the registry. And so, that takes away the discretion depending on certain situations where somebody may not deserve to have a lifetime, you know, to be on that registry for a lifetime for something that may not rise to the level of, of that consequence.
And like, number?
And really, and really, there's, you know, other opportunities to, to do that versus having our NISBA lobbyist push for it.
Yeah, I mean, because each one of these, I would assume, has somebody that's pushing it, when we don't really know what the motivation is, other than that, you know, chance to vet it and talk about it. But another one, like number five, we support authorizing testing accommodations for students with disabilities. I mean, wouldn't we already support that? I mean, why do we have another resolution that, wouldn't that already be out there? Don't we support anything that allows students with disabilities to have testing accommodations? So, why is that here again?
You know, in this case, I would have to say that it, there must, there must not be language in an existing resolution, or that would have been called out.
So, you, so, right now, we, we, we're looking for the, our board just to say, yes, we agree with all of these, so that somebody could vote.
There's, you know, there's variation. So, like I said, this is an exercise. This is, this is, this has, you know, similar to our audit, this is what we've done for the last several years as a process, you know, essentially the same document with the supporting. So, it is the way we've done practice. I, I would say that certainly, in, as we are doing in many other areas, we could reconsider a process going forward. And as, as I said, since we don't have a member going, you know, we could circle back to this at the future, or we could pull out certain portions. But at the end of the day, a vote today is a vote to, to, that we share with, with our, you know, cohort districts in Westchester, that we support them as they go forward to the NISBA convention, to support this slate.
But it's more than Westchester schools.
Westchester-Putnam. Yeah.
But the Niagara school.
Well, these resolutions, so, the, these are resolutions from across the state.
State, yeah.
And this is, and then, the, the, the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association recommendation for them. I mean, I guess I'd like to at least say that we support our Irvington resolution.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I absolutely agree with that. I don't know, what does everybody else think? Are we just?
I, I read all of them, and I support all of them pretty wholeheartedly.
I'm kind of with you, Deb. I can't, without, without understanding some of these, I don't think I want to just say, agree to all of them.
I guess that I would ask, is it, would you want to ask questions about them? Maura and I were available before and available here to answer questions.
I, I just don't think I'm going to vote to support them all without much further discussion, some of them.
So, I, I guess if we were to, to do this next year, where it'll have more significance, would you want to take the time to have a, a discussion about each of these resolutions, as we did at, at the West Putt with our cohort districts?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, we got it this, I know that, you know, the, the timing too was not good for me personally, having gotten it and not being able to, you know, digest it as thoroughly as I probably would have. But, yeah, I think going forward, maybe for some of them, if we, if we had like a week or so beforehand, a couple, like a two weeks before, I don't know how, what the timing's like with this. I don't, but if some of them jumped out, maybe it would be helpful to have more time to talk about some of them, especially if we're sending a representative from this board to attend the meeting, and you're actually going to speak out on them and vote on them. That being said, I understand that you, both of you put a lot of time into this, and I'm sure that there's been a lot of thought that has gone into them. But, again, not, not really being able to comfortably say, I understand each one of these, I'm a little uncomfortable voting on it.
Yeah, I guess I would say.
But I could abstain if, if that's, if that's, if that's an option.
Certainly, certainly, we can do the different, process different now, or in the future. I would say with, with, you know, two dozen other districts looking at it together, there is a lot of time and thought that's gone into it. So, if we want to duplicate that effort, we can certainly do that going forward, or if we want to look at specific issues.
Well, but there ones like support a rigorous process for granting teacher certification. What do we do now? We don't have a rigorous process for teacher certification.
Well, so, this is the shorthand version, and, and there's more specific language in that, in that NISBA document.
And I was just reading in the Wall Street Journal how five or six states in the country are loosening standards for teachers, because they can't get enough teachers, because there aren't enough teachers.
Extremely dangerous.
I, I understand, but I'm saying, I'm not sure that this is putting us in a better position in New York State, if we're creating tougher standards. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's not that I'm saying we shouldn't loosen standards, but this seems like a vague statement.
This is, this is the shorthand version, so I can pull up the, you know, the, as an example for that one.
It, it's tied to what Betty Rose is trying to do in, 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 I'm trying to think of the right word, in opposition to the call for charter schools to certify their own teachers with less restrictive requirements. Essentially, what the, what it boils down to. So, it's really about ensuring that all of our children have a highly qualified teacher, which is already in place with the beds process. But the beds process is actually extremely vague. You know, it's basically, you know, how many credits you have, and how many, it doesn't have anything to do with the actual quality.
And so, this is just ensuring this quality?
Well, it's ensuring that, that, that teachers pass through a, a, a highly qualified system, and making sure that the test that they take.
That's a resolution, which one was that?
Five.
Six.
Six, I'm sorry.
Could I add something to David's comment, too?
Speaking to them.
So, obviously, because this, the purpose of this is for lobbying, what you've got to look at is, is what messages the, so, the legislature and, and the, the rest of the state is, is getting from other sources. And right now, those sources are pressing on that particular issue pretty hard. I mean, it's, it's a national, it's, it's a national discussion, but it's, I mean, there's, there's also money behind it. And, and I think that the, the purpose of being a member of an organization like this one is to try and look at ways that we can support what the public schools have already put into place that is working. So, for, for what it's worth, if we're going to be a member of this organization, there's going to be some, some issues that we will be decided collectively, that we won't always agree with every single one, because the idea is that we can accomplish some of this together better than we ever, I mean, we can't, we can't decide these things always as a district. We have to discuss, decide them regionally if we are to have any, any impact at all on, on.
Well, and to, to the, to what you're saying, I mean, this process and this work was very significant for us. There was, over a period of years following the, the crash, the, the state was taking money and, and diverting it to other uses. And so, through this collective effort, we were able to press the, the governor and the legislature to, to end that process. So, you know, in, in certain areas, you know, that was tied also to letter writing campaigns, I mean, a whole other slew of activities. But it's, it, to your point, the, the regional work is very important on being able to, to move forward on some of those areas. So, in this, in this, the NISBA, the NISBA document related to the certification, it says, "It is important that our students are taught by professional teachers who are subject matter experts. In order to ensure school districts have high-quality teachers in the classroom, a rigorous process for granting teacher certification is needed. In recent years, have been many calls to reduce barriers to becoming a classroom teacher in order to increase the number of teachers entering the profession. Where administrative barriers are impeding the establish, the establishment pipeline of new teachers, it is important that those barriers be removed," to your point. "However, it is equally as important that teachers entering the classroom and educating our students are properly prepared. Before granting a candidate certification, these individuals must be required to demonstrate that they have attained the skill and knowledge needed to do the important job they seek. While the certification process may be challenging, and candidates may be unsuccessful in their first attempt, the measure of preparedness must be whether or not an educator is ready to enter the classroom, not whether enough people are passing the certification exams. School districts must be confident that a hiring, that hiring a certified teacher is a true demonstration that that individual is qualified to do the job he or she has been hired for." So, I think it does speak to that point of trying to hold the line in the push to loosen the standards in our state. So, we have a couple of different options. We can call for motion to vote on this slate, we could table it for a later discussion, we could pull out certain items to vote on.
This is not part of the consent agenda.
Yes, and in fact, I believed it would be, but it's.
No, it's not.
It's listed as a discussion.
My understanding was it was just going to be discussed, because no one was talking to vote.
Yes, I, I believe there was a misunderstanding in terms of what it is, so, I guess.
So, we don't need to vote?
Michael, by when would we need to have a vote in order for our voice to count in all of this?
We need to vote.
Well, we don't, I guess at this point, as, as I've been reminded, it wasn't put into the consent agenda, so there, there isn't a vote, it wasn't a discussion, and...
See, my understanding that these thirty-one resolution, or, sorry, these twenty-five resolutions are all going to be supported by the WPSBA, correct?
Well, in fact, no, no, in fact, so, it's actually the New York State, at the New York State level, in the Capitol, the New York State School Board Association, what's that?
But they're supporting these twenty-five.
That's right.
Whether we vote or not.
They are.
Sounds like it, so.
So.
So, if, if, if there had been a vote, either A, we would have wanted somebody to, to go and represent us at the meeting, or otherwise, it would have been a symbolic.
Symbolic, right.
And it's also, because we're a young board, it's also a discussion about process, because next year, we'll want to get it right.
And, and are we to assume there's thirty-one of these in front of us? Was there hundreds that were discussed, or?
There, there are, and there's a, there's a, a central NISBA committee that reviews and, and puts these ones forward.
And then specifically, out of those hundreds, they literally put in front of, up in New York State, they want the ones to show that they're opposed, or that there's no decision. So, it's not, so, the last page, in other words, is part of.
I don't know if there's hundreds that are presented, but I, I think there, those are reviewed, and that's the, so, the, the, the NISBA meeting, at the NISBA committee meeting, they said not recommended for adoption, and in this case, we agree with that recommendation. So, they'll still be presented at the, at the meetings, but the recommendation is to, to oppose them, so they probably will not pass.
But are there others that were opposed and, and not decided?
Yeah, like.
That's what I was just wondering.
I don't believe so.
Well, number nineteen, for instance, opposed a property tax cap and call for its repeal, has been opposed.
That's been opposed, and, and so, an example there is that, that, in fact, that's a very popular law in the state, and it was, to, to, for West Putt, it wasn't considered a realistic resolution.
It was a business decision.
Call for the, the ending of the tax cap, but in fact, what, there are other ones that talk about amending the tax cap.
Two percent, right? I see that. So, so, so is that, is that a, I don't expect you to know the answer, but I'm just supposing, is that a, so it's not convenient for, for, for their membership kind of thing? To the point of the question is like, would, if, if this is going to be symbolic for us, right? I, I stand behind the majority of these resolutions.
Right.
Right? Both as a citizen, as an educator, et cetera, et cetera. But when, you know, it, it's not to their benefit to add something because it works for them. Puts the whole thing, to me, in sort of like, well, do I want to be associated with that kind of symbolism?
Which, which, I'm sorry, which?
What Dave's saying is, what I was wondering, we're, we're saying, if we assign on to this, that we oppose, that, that we agree, sorry, that the statement opposed the property tax cap and call for its appeal, we oppose that. That, that's symbolically, we're saying.
We, we, we oppose the resolution that would flat out say, do away with the tax cap.
That's what that is.
We know that, and we know as a community, that the tax cap kills us every year.
Yes.
Right?
No, no, the, the, how does the tax cap kill?
Well, every year, we struggle to stay under the cap, we struggle to do this, we struggle this, it limits us.
As, as a district.
As a district, correct.
District, right.
So, so that, so because, just trying to be clear on it, I'm not, you know, again, I, I support the bulk of it.
Yeah, no, no, it's good, I'm, I'm with you.
But if, if the, if WPSBA say.
West Putt is the short name.
Was it?
West Putt. Or Westchester Putt. Yeah, yeah.
If West Putt says they are opposing the opposition of the property tax cap and call for its repeal, but they support, supporting legislation that will allow it to only be a minimum of two percent, right? So, those are the two.
Right. So, so, I mean, West Putt also, you know, Maura, myself, Dr. Harrison, and you are also, you know, if you're, want to be engaged in this, we, we meet with legislators in our area. And so, if we're trying, you know, and, and NISBA does it at the state level, and you, even in January, I think, is, there's an opportunity for school board members to go with other school board members to Albany to lobby directly legislators. It's a nonstarter to say, you got to do away with the tax cap. So, it's not worth having that conversation, right?
No, no, no track.
Because I've been having that conversation, Dr. Harrison's had that conversation. Every, every legislator, every senator, every assembly person is going to tell you, that it's not going to happen. So, why would we make that, why would we lead with that, right? We can say, Irvington, we had a negative tax cap. That's kind of, that's a pretty big imposition. So, maybe you can amend it to say, no negative tax caps. Maybe you can say, you know, let's, you said it was going to be two percent, let's really make it two percent. Those are things that may have more of an opportunity to occur. There's a, there's a Senator Flanagan who wants to make the tax cap permanent. Well, as part of that, you know, negotiation back and forth, if that were to happen, well, you have to do it in a way that's not going to hurt school districts. So, maybe there are adjustments to be made now that we have a, a number of years in under this tax cap formula.
So, so wait, so, what's the difference between twelve and eighteen? So, twelve says support meaningful reforms to the tax cap, that formula, that would ensure viability, sustainability of schools, and then the others call it a minimum of two percent. And then, there was another one I thought I saw that was a Niagara schools asking for something else.
Yeah, so, it's targeting different, the twelve and eighteen are targeting different aspects of the tax cap. One is the, the actual formula, the other is the actual percentage, so that it wouldn't be less than two percent. So, those are, those are looking at different opportunities for how to adjust the tax cap.
Right, and then, there's thirteen that says, ensure no school district can have a negative.
That's right. So, that's a third component.
Couldn't it? Okay.
You think, you would think logically, they'd be melded into one.
Exactly.
Just maybe for Maura and Michael, just maybe a process thing. When I look at this, I look at this document that, that you're referencing as kind of like a scorecard. And so, when you go, the actual voting, the delegates are the representatives from the individual school districts. So, when you look down the column in, in the sheet that's being referenced, where it has the West Putt meeting consensus, that was kind of the meeting of the minds of who was there, and, but school, individual school districts, you can vote in favor or oppose however you want on the individual resolutions.
You can, that's right.
So, so, just because West Putt says oppose or support doesn't mean that Irvington or anyone else needs to go along with what that is.
That's right.
That was just the collective wisdom when these were reviewed locally.
Right, and, and the more that we have consensus, the more that, you know, the more strength behind support or opposition to those resolutions.
And like, a lot of times, when you're sitting in a room and you're hearing several arguments, pro and con, too, you can maybe get up to speed on a part of that issue, or understand where that issue might be coming from in a certain group of districts, where it may or may not approve, apply to us, and you may, that may be clearer faster, I guess, is a way of saying it, so.
It's, it's very helpful.
Sometimes it's a shorthand.
Exactly. Like, in the case of our resolution, we were the ones who were able to explain it to, to the rest of, of the, of the West Putt members present. And similarly, there was a lot of information, as well as the, the executive director, a NISBA representative was there, a NISBA attorney was there. So, there's a lot of, of information being presented there that essentially is, is represented in this, in this sheet. So, I mean, absolutely, I think going into next year, A, there's some awareness, I'm glad we have this opportunity to, to discuss it. Again, we can't support our own resolution at the meeting this year, but we'll find out whether it passes. And, and I guess, you know, we've, we're doing a lot of work in terms of our processes, you know, with our governor's handbook. This may be another area where we look at what's our approach to make sure we can success, successfully navigate this process, so that we can connect with our, our regional and state organizations.
Well, thank you to you and Maura. It's a lot of work. I appreciate you representing us and putting our resolution forward.
I agree. Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
There's a lot of good stuff in here.
Yeah, no, and it is, I mean, I definitely wanted to bring it forward, just because it's, it's, it's a little complex, we all have to sort of wrap our heads around it, We all have to sort of wrap our heads around it, and so, this is our opportunity to do that.
Thanks for the clarity.
So, next up, we are going to get some committee and liaison reports. It's been, we have several that have yet to meet, so that'll happen next month. But I guess with the, someone from the Buildings and Grounds report want to share?
I don't have it, do you have it?
It's linked to the... Do you want to? I have it up.
Let's put it between me and Cameron.
Don't forget Brian.
Brian, we'll slide it down to you. The three of us met on September eighteenth with the Buildings and Grounds committee, and we talked a little bit about our goals for this year, 2017, and some ongoing work and proposals being made by the Main Street School principal. But basically, in terms of goals for this year, we looked at Capitol project planning. We looked at the list that we generated last year and talked a little bit about what we're thinking about this year. We discussed beautification efforts that have been underway, both with the plantings and discussions about signage that's in and around the main campus, aiming to try to get some consistency and clarity on what we're looking for to change. We talked a little bit about possibly a new entrance for the high school as part of that Capitol project looking forward. And we also talked about some of the needs that have been articulated by our principal, David Cohen, at the high school, and maybe with the new scheduling, master scheduling, and maybe there's some Buildings and Grounds needs that have to go into supporting his vision so that we can make that a success as well. And then we talked specifically, since Joyce Chapnik was there, was articulating her vision for the playground at Main Street School. And I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, Michael, in terms of that project.
I think keep it short, that's the question, my community question.
But there's different phases to that project at the playground. She's gotten some estimates and numbers, very organized, very exciting, pulling in the teachers, parents, and students, and I'm sure at some stage she'll make a presentation to us. But that piece of the work at Main Street School, we're hoping we could also take a step back in Buildings and Grounds and look at all of our campuses, their needs for equipment, playground equipment that is needed, and look at how to look at kind of like a master vision, if you will, for the district. And then lastly, there was, Dr. Harrison walked us through some of the vision that our village has in terms of the Irvington Town Hall Theater, and since it sits next to Main Street School, how that is going to be tied together. And again, I don't know how much information we should go into at this point, but they're looking to build a new entrance at the Village Town Hall Theater right on Main Street, and that entrance will impact some school properties, so there's some easement issues, and we're just really at the initial phase of conversation. And I think they're going to come in and give a presentation at some point.
Yeah, so we've had some initial informal conversations with village leadership and their architects. Just looking at this conceptually, they're actually going to be presenting to the village this week, or whenever their next meeting is. And then following that, assuming the village is interested in moving forward, we would invite representatives from the village and our architectural firm to come in and present to the Board of Education, potentially the regular meeting in November. So, Mr. Schaffner and I will follow up later this week after the village meeting, and if that's a go, I'll talk to Michael and Maria about adding it to the next regular business agenda in November.
Brian?
Yeah, I think that covers it, thank you.
You should talk about your tour of the facilities, Brian.
There's a lot of them and a lot to see.
And a lot of needs.
Yes, yes, a lot of needs, which I think, you know, everyone can see every time they drive by the field to see our equipment shrink wrapped and stacked up.
That's the starter, yeah, exactly.
Okay, communications, Mara, did you want to share our meeting?
Sure. So, we started out with our annual objectives, which obviously are to continue to improve communications with stakeholders in a number of ways. We talked about where the website project currently is, and how that's progressing, reviewing, and potentially improving other communications such as the district newsletter, and potentially a process on how letters to the Board of Ed might be handled, as well as a short discussion of the district branding rollout, so that would be primarily the logo.
And where are we at, Michael?
With?
The rollout, the web, website.
The website.
The website, yeah.
Yeah, so we just revised the timeline, and we're looking for, Jesse's going to be going through and reviewing some of the nuanced items with the Administrative Council, which is our administrators in the district. But we're looking, we right now have a date in April that we're looking to launch the new site.
And before that, there's a lot of backdating to implementation, trainings, checking that the information, you know, everything is presented properly. So, it'll kind of be alive, but it won't be the website until April. Did anybody want to share anything from one of their meetings as a liaison? I mean, certainly in terms of what we just shared with the West Putt, that was the meeting that Mara has our liaison for the Legislative Action Committee of that group, was essentially what we did at that meeting, discuss and go through those different items. And if anybody has anything to share from the meeting they attended.
No, but I will say that the Curriculum Committee is going to meet on October thirty-first at seven a.m.
It's going to be scary.
That'll be very exciting, and...
On the following?
Yes.
It'll be very frightening.
Are you going to need a costume?
I might wear a costume, although I'll be on the phone, so nobody will really know.
So, you can say anything.
I can say anything, but that'll be exciting.
Oh, yeah.
We'll report back as soon as that meeting, the first meeting in November.
You can use an alternate voice like Darth Vader or something.
I might, I have a machine.
I am your teacher.
I am Luke's father, in fact.
You are, yes.
That's actually true.
Actually are Luke's father. I mean, I would say with the Quad Districts, that's actually essentially an organization of, that has been more about for a few years that I'm hoping to get started by reaching out to the presidents of our area school boards to say, let's connect, and similarly do some discussion about how we might be able to connect, either on sharing information, or eventually even, you know, what other opportunities there are for our boards to be talking to each other actively. So, that's something I'll try and do over the next few weeks. Okay? Seeing no other liaison reports, we will move on to comments from members of the community. And I would ask that, for the purposes of, we record these events so people are able to watch later on, so we ask that you go and speak into the mic, introduce yourselves. We do have a three-minute time for each speaker, and we ask that you address me. Typically, we tend, as the president of the board, typically we don't respond to questions immediately here, but we hear them, and if we have the opportunity to respond at a future date, or if it's something simpler, we can do it here. And back to that communications report, we also are looking at, you know, sometimes a question that comes up here is one that we provide a response, and similar to the letters to the board, we might use that, our website, as a vehicle for sharing our response so that everybody can hear the answers in the future, not just the person who asked it. So, is there any comments from the community?
These pertaining to agenda or general, section of the agenda.
These are topics that appear on the agenda.
Commenting or something for the curriculum committee, does that count as being on the agenda?
I would say, go ahead.
You're going to say a little choice?
I said yes.
Okay, go ahead. So, on our emergency, well, you know, we already, I'm a parent of a second grader at Dazlane, and I will not talk about that extremely fast. So, I do want to make one comment that I did not get to share in the last meeting. I think it's important for everyone to know that the primary theater school in Irvington is offering Spanish as part of their after-school program to parents. They have monthly participation, and parents are paying for that program. So, I think it's important to note that it's not just the community members that you've seen attend this meeting, it's members that are coming into the community that will be attending Dazlane next year, the year after, et cetera. So, I just want to make that point. That program could very easily expand. So, now there's two theater schools that offer Spanish as part of their program in two Irvington.
So, they clarify preschools.
School of Schools?
Uh, theater schools.
Catch that?
Yeah, so you were talking about preschools.
Yes, I'm talking about preschools.
Great.
So, those can be taught in kindergarten, and right now, because we don't have any sort of foreign language program at Dazlane, since we don't have any foreign language program at Dazlane, they'll have nowhere to develop, continue to develop those skills.
Thank you very much.
So, please consider it during your committee meeting on October twenty-eighth.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, sorry, right, oh.
Good evening, my name is Jessa Vasarell. Um, the meeting's everyone, people from the halls. I just wanted to reach out to technical comments, and I need to speak to this microphone.
Well, I'm not sure if it's working or not, but I would stay close to it. You can talk there if you want, but just so that in case it is working, it's recorded.
Right, so, the problem is that we did explore the recording from last time, but we have supporters here, boys are opinion, have their personal story and opinions, and we can't hear anything of the video recording. It's such a bad sound quality, that I, this is, you know, website's not been working, so we can hear Aaron, and then it's stopped again.
Okay.
So, I would just ask if it would be possible to really ensure that, you know, this works, because all those comments, unfortunately, nobody will be able to hear them.
Okay.
So, it's a big...
Yes, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I'm sorry to hear that they weren't recorded, because that is the purpose of it, we do want people to be able to hear, and so...
They were recording, but the recording was so low, the sound level is so low.
So, you can't hear? Okay, I'm sorry to hear that.
And the other thing I wanted to ask, if it would be impossible in the future, if we kind of, maybe let them know in advance that we have people coming and trying again, so they can be recording properly, if it's possible to have maybe people, you know, cough earlier. The last time we did it, we waited, we finished at ten thirty p.m., and we had about twenty people come, and then they ate, waited, spaced at ten thirty.
Yeah, well, I can promise you that that, the length of that meeting is never to be repeated, we have the commitment.
Don't say never.
No, we're going to say never.
No, we're going to say never, we're going to say never. If we see it going that long again, we've done that a few too many times, and we don't want ourselves to have that happen. So, I'm sorry that it went so long. You know, a lot of, as you heard, a lot of important information was being shared, and we're going to figure out a different structure to get that important information shared without it taking many hours into the night. So, I'm so sorry that it went so long. And thank you for sharing, we definitely do want to be able to hear from the community. I'm sorry that that wasn't recorded at a level that was audible, so we'll have that looked into. Thank you. Very good, so, now we are actually at the consent agenda, and...
May I just make a note, my error is brought to my attention, so I don't want point fingers any other way from Ms. Cardi, but to me, but the seven point two trip is actually to Italy. The Greece slipped in there because it was associated with our Latin and ancient Greek program. We're not going to Greece.
So, where it says "and Greece," we just write that?
Cross out the "and" Greece.
Ah, well, now they won't go.
Yeah, exactly, just for that.
Very good, so, again, if, with the consent agenda, are there, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Are there any questions related to it before we vote? Seeing none, may I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I believe we have information for the... Yes, we have a donation, correct? What number is that?
Ten-two.
Yes, the Robert.
So, thank you to John and Barbara Fisher for their donation to the Donald Roberts Scholarship Fund, very much appreciated. And it was, these donations were in honor of Donald Robert and his eightieth birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
We appreciate all the support that comes in for these different scholarships. There we go, so, I think, how are we dealing with our... So, we've already had community comment, we have one more opportunity, if somebody had one more thought? Okay, we are then going to, our next public meeting is on October twenty-fourth at seven thirty p.m., right here in the campus presentation room. We're now going to move into executive session, if I could have...
Matters pertaining to particular person.
Or matters pertaining to a particular, this one is a history of a particular person. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending.
Thank you very much.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Thank you. We staying here?
We're good there.
Thank you.
Michael, for executive session. We're leaving, and Michael wants to display something. He says Irvington credentials don't work. Should want to see these emails, got to see that.
Relax, it's this.
Yeah.
What's that?
Your credentials don't work?
I think it was trying, whenever I try, I get this rejection. I know, it's tough for me too, because I like, I usually don't get along usually.
Yeah, it's a cheap one. I mean, that's for your district email, should work here, because there's a whole syncing mechanism.
So, it doesn't work when I log into Wi-Fi, and it's right here, it's like that.
It's a good sense.
I would like all access if possible, except for the highest level. There, Mike? So, how can you be logged on as a guest then, Raina, so we can just display? Lane, you have changed for twenty? Yeah.